We would like to welcome you to the 2010 Election Road Trip. I'm Nels Jensen, the Director of Content and Programming for the Press Enterprise and PE.com. And we would like to thank you for participating in this inaugural event, which is sponsored by the Press Enterprise, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, and Mount San Jacinto College. This is the third of 25 forums that we are putting on this week, held around Western Riverside County. Today, we're here at the Noble Creek Community Center in Beaumont. Tomorrow, we'll be in Riverside. Wednesday, we'll be in San Jacinto. And on Thursday and Friday, we'll be in Minifee. All of these forums will be streamed live on the Internet here on PE.com and on Ustream.tv. The videos also can be viewed on demand at PE.com on our Political Road Trip page. As I mentioned, this is our third forum. This one is for the Banning City Council, where there are two seats available. We'll spend about an hour talking about the city of Banning, which is among the oldest in Riverside County. The city was incorporated in 1912, has its own police force and airport, and is home to a hospital. The city has plenty of economic challenges related to growth and competition from other cities. We'll now meet the candidates, as they are seated as they will appear on the ballot on November 2nd. And then, after we go through that, then we'll have an opening statement from each candidate for two minutes. Seated to my immediately immediate left is Lyndon Taylor, a planner. Next is Perry Rocky Bray, a contractor. Next is Bob Botts, a councilman and retired businessman. Next is Victor Edinburgh, a teacher and educational administrator. Debbie Franklin is an incumbent member of the council. Next on the ballot is Chris McCallum, who is a business owner. Chris is not able to attend this function because of another commitment. He did stop by this morning and say hello. And last on the ballot and at the end of this panel is Edward Miller, a retired engineer. As I mentioned, there are two seats up for this election in the five-member council. Ms. Franklin and Mr. Botts are the incumbents. Before we get into the questions, each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Carol Parks, in our front row here, is our timekeeper and will signify the halfway mark on your statement and when time is running out. We ask that you abide by the rules that we just discussed off-camera. We -- and we'll also, after the questions, everyone will have a chance to do a one-minute closing statement. So we will begin the opening statements with Lyndon Taylor.
Thank you very much. I'm Lyndon Taylor. I'm a candidate for the Banning City Council because I believe in many areas, the city council is pursuing the wrong agenda. Priorities are missing in a number of areas. Planning needs to be intensified, and spending is reckless. Let me give you some examples of reasons why I chose to run. Number one, a couple of years ago, the Banning City Council entertained a toxic sledge proposal. This would have caused grievous harm to the health of the people in Banning and would have been a financial disaster. While the council now denies that they were supportive of this, they did vote twice unanimously for letters of intent with Liberty Energy, and they also spent $430,000 of taxpayer money to buy a piece of land. A second point, the grand jury chose to investigate our city and did so, and found a number of problems there. The city council, except for Councilwoman Debbie Franklin, voted to essentially ignore those statements. Most recently, we saw in the Los Angeles Times, a great damage done to the reputation of the city of Banning, when they held our city up as an example of a poor operation for redevelopment. We need to reform how the city council does the city's business. I have the experience to accomplish it, and that's why I'm running.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Perry Bray.
Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Perry Bray, and I am running for city council here in Banning. The reason I'm running for city council is because I feel I can make a difference. And that difference is to bring business in the city together. And not only the businesses in the city, but also the kids and the community come together with our city and work together to become better than what we are. Our whole desire of the people up here on this council is to make Banning better. It's not to go back in time. It's not to dig up the past. It's to press forward, go further, and become the city that we're meant to be. And that's the city of a future that has a future, and we can continue that with working together and not pushing buttons, pointing fingers. Our job is to get the city working, get the people in here working, and have the trust built back up. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Bob Botts.
First, let me thank the Press Enterprise for giving us this opportunity. It's so important that the public and the voter have the facts and the truth of the issues. I'm pleased with having had the opportunity to work with our existing council during probably one of the most difficult times that I've ever experienced. And as I look around the room, where there's a couple maybe older than I am, but the Great Recession has been very, very difficult. But despite that, we took a fiscal responsibility and tried to balance our budget. We're very close to a balanced budget. We cut nearly $5 million out of the budget. We unfortunately had to lay off people rather than coming to the taxpayer for more taxes. And citywide, we eliminated $14 million in expenses. So we've taken a very challenging, difficult position to bring our budget in line. At the same time, economic development is -- has been critical now, and going forward is even more critical. I'm pleased to say that our Economic Development Agency, working with staff, just approved a 15 or 12-building, 1-million-square-foot warehouse and distribution assembly facility, which will break ground in 30 to 60 days on the east side of Banning. We just brought a manufacturing company from Los Angeles. Even in the tough times, businesses are looking, where is it business-friendly and where can we find land that's reasonable? We bought the All-Star Dodge, contrary to what some of the opponents lie about. We bought that with knowledge of a new buyer, a new company coming to town that would be a huge sales tax generator. And again, contrary to my opponents, there was an appraisal done by the buyer and the seller, which is important that we protect the taxpayers. If we're spending your money, we need to make sure that we're not paying more than we should. My time is up. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll hear from Victor Edinburgh.
My name is Victor Edinburgh. I'm a candidate for the Banning City Council. The current city council has severely compromised the city of Banning's financial stability. In other words, they have placed Banning in a financial situation where if utility rates are not raised, Banning could go into bankruptcy. This came about because the water bond monies were spent for water, non-water bond projects. This was an illegal act carried out by the council's mismanagement of Banning's general redevelopment and general funds. The reason I should become a city council person is because of the things that I will do to get this particular city back on its track. I will push for an audit of all fiscal issues to uproot the causes of mismanagement actions. The audit will also provide directions as to how to correct the willful detrimental acts of the current city council. I will not vote for any new taxes until utility rates are -- will not vote for any taxes because utility rates cannot be increased unless the Banning people say that they should be increased. I have an associate of arts degree, a bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degree. I've served 10 years as an army officer in the United States National Guard and Army Reserves. I have managed educational programs totaling many dollars with this while serving as an administrator. Finally, I served three terms on the San Bernardino County Grand Jury. I can and will be a catalyst in fixing this financial mess in Banning. I need your vote to do that job. Thank you.
Okay. Debbie Franklin?
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us today and allowing us this opportunity to share some ideas. A little bit of my background, I'm a retired insurance claims manager. I'm the wife of a retired fire captain. I have two daughters, one an Air Force Academy graduate, the other is studying for her master's in accounting. The reason that I have been on the council is to not only represent the community, but also do the things that I believe a council is responsible for. The first thing is to make sure that we take care of the financial responsibilities of the city, to hold the city accountable, the staff accountable in regards to how the funds are spent, and also to make sure that we are moving in the direction that the community wants us to go into. The second thing is to make sure that we are looking at the needs of the city, putting policies in place to address the city's needs, moving the city forward, and then also holding staff accountable to make sure those policies are met. The third responsibility is to actually reflect the needs of the community. And to do that, I've been involved in several community events, several different agencies, to be able to talk to people, find out what their desires are, and then how they want the city to move forward. I have worked to make sure the money is spent properly through areas such as focusing on our electric substation, our water requirements, so that we do have facilities for our future, but also to make sure that as we move forward, we're addressing not only economic development, but putting policies in place that will move Banning into a better city successfully with jobs, revenue, and community activities. Thank you.
Okay. Finally, we'll hear from Edward Miller.
Good afternoon. I am Edward Miller. I have two minutes to tell you the reason that I am running for the city council of Banning, is that despite their rosy statements and their blaming the recession, the decisions of our current city council, including the two members who are now running for reelection, have placed our city on the verge of bankruptcy. Our city has $115 million in bond debt. In comparison, our sister city, Beaumont, has no bond debt. Mayor Botts and Councilmember Franklin both voted to spend $17 million of the water bond money for building the police station and other construction, despite the fact that the finance director specified at that time that $20 million would be needed by the water utility for its future needs. They both state now that they had no choice but to make that decision. The minute of that meeting, at which the finance director specifically said that those funds could be used for any public project whatever, despite that fact, they voted to spend the money not on the water system. That neglect of the future needs of our city has led the council to now propose a 70% increase in our water rates. The council and the two members running for reelection have so neglected our city finances that the city staff said that this tremendous increase was the only way to pay off the water bond debt. Mayor Botts and Councilmember Franklin do not like to mention that our city is already in default on some of the provisions of that bond, and that the black mark of that default will make it difficult, if not impossible, to get future bonds and to prevent us from getting state and federal grants. Okay? There are so many other examples of their lack of understanding.
All right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. Time. All right. We thank you for those opening statements. Now, we're moving into the question-and-answer session. We have a series of questions provided by the newsroom staff of the Press Enterprise and from some readers. You'll have one minute to respond to each question. Once again, Carol Park is our timekeeper. We have changed the order of response for every question, so the same person will not be responding first every time. In this case, the first question is going to be directed first to the challengers, and then a slightly different question to the incumbents will begin with Victor Edinburgh. And the question is, what will you personally bring to the council?
I personally will bring to the council the experiences that I've had as an administrator in schools. I was an army officer. I've volunteered for many organizations where there were budgets that had to be balanced, and I was able to do that without any problems. I can bring many things to the council that I think would be forward-looking instead of antiquated. There are a lot of things that could be fixed that I think could -- I can do, such as actually doing some of the things that should have been done before. We should be looking at overseas investors. We should be looking at moving that particular building of the education. The education could be placed in that building instead of bond monies that are going to be spent for that new educational building. There are so many things that have to be done that I think I could bring to this council and make this a very, very productive city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lyndon Taylor, what personally will you bring to the council?
I've been a partner in a firm that has specialized --
Please use the mic. Thank you.
I've been a partner in a firm that has specialized in master planning for over 75 organizations. We did master plans, facilities plans. We also did financial planning and even did marketing plans for them. I've owned four businesses myself of varying sizes. I've been a vice president of a college. I've served on the board of directors of 10 different organizations. I have spent time and effort working in civic organizations all my life, and I would bring all of these skills to the Banning City Council.
Thank you very much. Okay. Perry Bray, what personally will you bring to the council?
The best thing I can bring to the council is a positive attitude. One, that we'll work with our businesses and the people on our council, to be able to bring them together, to work together, to come to a final conclusion of what we need to do in Banning. We have some problems. There's no denying that. But every city has problems. So the best way to do that is bring our business people in, ask them, what can we do as a city with your help, with your input, to make Banning a better place? Along with that, take our kids and find out what they're needing here in Banning. Banning right now has nothing for the kids really to do, except for our pool, which is a great thing we got over there. We have our boys and girls clubs, but we need some more activities for them to do. We need like a skating rink. We need someplace for the kids to go that they are not wandering through the streets. We got a few things, but we need a few things more. Along with that, we need to get our seniors and our kids working together. I worked with our kids one time in our church, got them working with the seniors, and guess what? They all got to know each other in our church group because of that. And that can happen in Banning right now.
Okay. Edward Miller?
I have a doctorate in engineering science. I have been a consulting engineer. I've done research and teaching and directed projects involving millions of dollars. As an engineer, the whole purpose is to examine things carefully. And our city council has not looked at our budget carefully, has not planned correctly for the future. And my background as an engineer, examining all the different aspects of the budget and the problem, will directly assist me in observing and making sure that our budget is on course.
Okay. A slightly different version of that question for the incumbents, Debbie Franklin. How personally have you helped the council to improve the city?
The areas that I've been focusing on are economic development, such as talking to the Small Business Association about enterprise zones for our city so that we can get other businesses in town. Also, to reflect the fact that I think that we need to be conservative. I did not vote for many of the things that other people have been blamed about, the cultural alliance, money going to the Haven, areas that I think those monies should have gone into economic development. And also to reflect the community spirit. I've spent a lot of time in community organizations, trying to find out what people are really concerned about, and then I bring those ideas forward, as well as working with people on an individual basis, to find out what their personal issues are and how we can fix them, whether they be problems with the speed in the city, whether or not they have problems with dealing with people at City Hall, but really trying to make sure that we, as a city, are really addressing the concerns of the community. Thank you.
Okay. Bob Botts, what have you personally brought to the council to help improve the city?
Basically, my experience has been as a businessman, both in retail and industrial manufacturing and banking business for 20 years. So my understanding of business, of finance, I think particularly of economic development. I worked for four years in the city of San Bernardino for economic development, and we've done a reasonable job, given a terrible economy. And I would view that going forward as just critical for expansion of economic development. A part of what I brought, and as Councilwoman Franklin says, we don't always agree. Sometimes it's four to one, or three to two, or five-zero. But we looked and wanted to revitalize our downtown, to have a place of pride where people can come and shop and eat and dine. And we've started to do that. And as a result of that, the court, the state court, has made a decision to build a $60 million courthouse, which is going to be a huge economic benefit to the city.
Okay. Our next question, we're going to begin with Lyndon Taylor. If elected, what will be your top priority for the council?
My top priority of all will be bringing business and industry to Banning and bringing jobs. A critical need is to get people off the streets of Banning and into good-paying jobs. That would be my number-one issue. Number two would be to look toward the economic, the greater economic development of the area and to assist businesses that are already there, and again, build the economic base of the community. Banning has lost $1 million in sales tax in the past year. We've got to recover that, and we've got to work hard to do it. So economic development would be my number-one goal.
Okay. Edward Miller, if elected, what would be your top priority for the council?
I agree with everything that Lyndon has just said. The main problem with Banning is that we do not have economic development. Again, if we compare Banning to our neighboring sister city, Beaumont, Beaumont has no debt. It has a tremendous tax rate, and our newspaper, The Record Gazette, indicated it was first in the state. Banning has spent its money on vacant land. It has spent its money on vacant buildings. We have over $8 million invested in those buildings and plants that do not provide any income. Worse than that, it takes them off the tax rolls so that we cannot get money from them. I would certainly emphasize getting businesses in to reverse that trend.
Okay. Bob Botts, if elected, what would be your first priority for the council?
There's a lot of projects that we need to continue, but economic development, both industrial development, which will produce jobs for not only our young people, but our little older-than-young people that are tired of driving on the freeway. Industrial manufacturing is terribly important. Retail is important, both for shoppers, for Beaumont and Banning residents, but for a stream of income from sales tax. And then I hear regularly, almost every day, why can't we have more restaurants, sit-down-type restaurants? So that clearly fits into the economic development range, and that's where we need a great deal of focus.
Okay. Perry Bray, what would be your first priority for the council?
Well, my top priority for the council would be our businesses and our city working hand-to-hand. If we got our businesses and our city working hand-in-hand with each other, it's going to help our people get more jobs. It's going to bring other businesses in, because people are going to look at this and say, wow, that city is promoting their businesses. They're really looking out for them. They're trying to do what's best for their businesses, and by that, they'll want to come here and start their business. Nobody wants to come to a town that doesn't work with the businesses. We have to do that. We have to make that a top priority. They're the people that are making the money. They're the ones that help paying the taxes here. They're the ones that brings in the funds. The city is there. We collect them. We spend them. But we have to make sure we spend it correctly, and that way we can do that is ask our businesses, what can we do to make it better? And we need your help.
Okay. Debbie Franklin, if elected, what would be your first priority for the council?
My first priority would be changing our council's focus from being issue-driven to policy-driven. The policies that I would want us to focus on would have to be balancing our city budget, bringing revenue in, economic development. And then, once these kinds of policies are put in place, holding staff accountable for them, moving out of the way so staff can actually get their job done, and then finally moving forward with, if they are accountable, checking with the community to make sure that we are doing what the community has asked, that we are taking care of the city's needs, and we're moving the city forward in a manner that makes everybody prosperous.
All right. Victor Edinburgh, if elected, what would be your top priority for the council?
Well, the top priority would be accountability, and that would have to go through an audit. I think that the city's financial businesses should be audited, so we can find out the reasons why these things have happened, so they won't happen again. We need economic development, but we also need to research and find out if we can get businesses here and why they're not coming. Because if Beaumont can have a balanced budget, Banning should also have one. There needs to be some research into terms where we can look at things that are actually going to work. We just can't be just spending money just on anything that comes up in our minds that says that this will help the city. We can't do that. We have to set out some plans to do these particular things with an audit. Thank you.
Okay. Edward Miller will field this question first. The city has provided thousands of redevelopment dollars to improve downtown Banning, as has been mentioned by several people already. Has this program worked?
Unfortunately, the program has not worked. It sounds like an excellent idea, but so much of the funds has been wasted on empty buildings, and there's absolutely no possibility of getting money from an empty building. Anyone who's interested or knowledgeable about real estate says that an empty building is a disaster, that you need a building that has some rental income at the very least. So in order to improve the downtown, we have to get businesses to come in, and that is what the city council is doing, is backwards. You don't buy a building, you don't fix up the building, and then ask for a developer. You search for developers, ask the developers, what do they need? What can we do to help you in your plan? You don't say, here's a nice building, wouldn't you like to come into it? That, again, is completely backward, and we need our city council to search for developers to improve our downtown area.
Okay. Debbie Franklin, the same question. Has the redevelopment effort in downtown Banning, has that program worked?
I think part of the program has worked. Every city, every resident in a city wants to have an appealing downtown. Ours was not. To improve the facades downtown made it more appealing for not only the residents who actually live here, that spend time downtown, but also it has created an environment for businesses to want to come in. All of the buildings were not empty. Some of them have been, but I have also seen people looking at those buildings, and they are interested in coming in. Some of the buildings have had ongoing businesses in them, such as Wing's Restaurant, Super Sub, and the law office there. The part that hasn't worked is that we have also put money into some organizations that have not increased the number of traffic people downtown. Those are the ones that I voted against, but I think overall downtown is more appealing. I think that it has also helped us to have the courthouse actually come downtown, and people are looking more at our downtown area for business. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll turn to Lyndon Taylor. The downtown redevelopment program in Banning, has it worked?
No, it hasn't. It hasn't for several reasons. Ed Miller alluded to some of them. You don't simply put new facades on empty buildings. You put facades on buildings that have a business in them and help that businessperson. Too often, we've had a situation where the empty buildings have had a higher priority than the buildings that have occupants. We've spent a lot of money in the wrong directions. A million-two for All-Star Dodge, a million-eight for San Gorgonio Inn. We bought an art gallery for $450,000 and are now contemplating putting more money in for remodeling. No, it hasn't worked, and what we need to do is to ask ourselves the question, for the dollars spent, how many jobs have we generated?
Okay. Thank you very much. Perry Bray, has the redevelopment program in downtown Banning, has that program worked?
I would have to say yes, it has worked, but it's not finished yet. And one thing you've got to realize, nobody's going to come to a place and put a business in that a building looks horrible. They're going to look at it and say, again, what can I get help for? What can I do here? You've got to make it look appealing. You've got to make it look good. I'll give you an example. Sun Lakes is a jewel of Banning. I'll give you that. It's a beautiful place. But if you were to pull up to Sun Lakes and the golf carts was dead, the ponds were empty, and the paint was peeling all over the place, would you buy there? No. You'd want it taken and fixed up. Your own place in Sun Lakes makes these people there keep their places up. That's what we're trying to do in Banning. Make the people, make the business, keep their stuff up, where everything looks appealing. And where we can help them out, we should help them out.
Okay. Bob Botts, has the redevelopment effort in downtown Banning worked?
Yes, I believe it has. Unfortunately, the economy, and my opponents don't like me to talk about the economy, but it's been drastic for all of us. The plan was to revitalize the buildings, like Old Town Pasadena, Old Town Temecula. They went in and revitalized their buildings, and the businesses began to come. We're a little bit behind because of the recession, but I believe we will catch up. One of the leading developers in Southern California and all of California, Art Pearlman, said, I'd love to do a project in Banning. He's working on Paseo San Gorgonio, which would be restaurants, retail, three-story office building to support the courthouse. And of course, what we've done, the state said, your revitalization really helped us make the decision to bring that courthouse here. And a $60 million investment for construction, and then hundreds of people to bring them downtown, will bring more businesses. will bring more businesses.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Victor Edinburgh, has the redevelopment efforts in downtown Banning worked?
No, they haven't. Many millions of dollars have been spent redeveloping buildings that no one were, were in. The facades were money thrown away, the foreclosures that took place after the redevelopment of some of those buildings went on, they lost millions of dollars and those things just can't go on. I think that the improving the downtown area means that there's going to have to be some studies done where we can get people in there. We can't go out and spend money without any cause for spending it. We have to get people in those buildings before we spend the money. I think that's been mentioned two or three times and that's, that's the theme of this particular meeting here tonight, is to find some new people in there, to do some new things and get this city back on its feet. Thank you.
Okay, next question, we're going to have Bob Botts respond first. What can be done, what else can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
Well, I, I think we can redouble our effort. I've already, and I won't go back over what, all, all of what I said, but this Economic Development Committee, the CRA, with, with the council members as, as members of that and staff, regularly attend what we call ICSC, which is a nationwide shopping center organization, which cities that are looking for retail and commercial and restaurants attends those things. We have had, as I said, the engineering company that is going to be building on the east side. We have the Lawrence Equipment that just came to town. And one of the comments they made, and I can tell you, it hasn't always been the case. One of the comments they made was banning was very easy to deal with as they bought the old Pacific Window Building. A lot of us on the council have regularly said, we must be business friendly and I think we'd all agree historically, in the past maybe we haven't, haven't always been, but we are now.
I'm sorry, time's up. All right, Victor Edinburgh, same question. What else can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
Well, I, I think the types of things that we're going to have to do again, we're going to have to go out and find businesses to come in. We've lost hundreds of jobs by the Dutch Company that left, went to Hemet. The Gila Port has left Banning and gone to Hemet. We have to bring some of the businesses in so that they will be attracted to the city. And that, this has to be researched. We're going to have to go out and find people to come in. There's a grocery store that's needed on the east end of Banning, there isn't anything over there. I, I see fire trucks coming from Marango all the way over to Albertson to buy groceries. There should be something there. The only thing that's down there is a liquor store. So we're going to have to do a whole lot of research and improvement of things that are going to have, have in Banning so that we can have some, some downtown jobs. There are a lot of things we can do to bring the jobs in. They have turned down many of the things that, that they could have had jobs with, but those things have to be reinvented again.
Okay, thank you. Debbie Franklin, what else can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
One of the first things I think we still have to do is have a policy in place that says we want economic development downtown. And to do that, we have to be able to offer incentives. We should be looking at things like enterprise zones that give tax credits to businesses and that is something that I have been able to find out about. I have found out that we may be actually already qualified for some enterprise zones that will help businesses coming in. We also need to make sure that we're having our current businesses work with the SBA and SCORE so that we not only retain them, but help them to grow in our city. And then we also need to work with our neighbors on both sides, the east and the west, to make sure we can do whatever regional projects we can and have them focused in Banning. Thank you.
All right, Edward Miller, what can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
One of the things that has not been mentioned is the fact that the proposed increase in our water rates will not permit any new businesses to come in. No business could possibly come into a city that has a seventy percent increase in its water rates. Now, Mayor Botts has proposed instead of that, a fifteen percent increase the first year instead of thirty percent. What he has failed to mention is that that proposal will completely drain our reserve and at the end of the fourth year, we'll have a million dollar deficit in the reserve. So we have to look at the utility rates and the way that you do that is to recognize that we cannot build everything in the utility that is now promised. A water reclamation is promised, we can't afford that. We must keep our rates low to get our businesses to be interested in coming here.
Okay, Lyndon Taylor, what else can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
Several things. First of all, the use of search groups is done by a lot of cities, search consultants to help us contact targeted business areas. Sending staff out, including city council, to business conferences where we can interface with various kinds of businesses and show them what Banning can do for them. We need to maintain and advance a user-friendly city hall for businesses. With the college coming to town in one form or another, we should think about a small business incubator, which will allow the small entrepreneur the opportunity to open a business and give him the rules of the road. We need to assist our, our present businesses and assist them in growing in every way possible.
Okay, thank you. Perry Bray, what else can be done to bring more jobs to downtown Banning?
Well, one of the things we need to do first is make sure the businesses we have here are not leaving. We need to make sure that those people are happy and are taken care of. Once we have that established, then other businesses will start taking a look at that as, as a place they can come to. One way you do that is you give them incentives. You lower their fees. You let them know that, hey, come here, we're not going to charge you so much for this, we want to get you in here. We've heard different things about Beaumont and how Beaumont has a surplus and Beaumont doesn't have a deficit. Well, Beaumont also has some big businesses that came in that helped them out. To get those in here, they had to give them a lot of incentives. This is the same thing Banning has to do and we have to be willing to make those incentives and take that cost right now and realize that a little bit they're going to spend now is going to re, come back to us later on in the future and we'll be back on track.
Okay, keep that microphone up because you get this one first.
Okay.
All right. What is your position on the City Redevelopment Agency's contract with the Banning Cultural Alliance?
I'm not against the Cultural Alliance. I think the Cultural Alliance is a good thing. I do believe they have to have accountability for the funds that they receive, just like you would with anybody else. A relationship between the council and the Cultural Alliance is a good thing because you can, more people you got working towards the same thing, the better you're going to get there, more hands into it, more things get done. There are some great things they've done, there's some things that, you know, I'm not a big art buff, but hey, there's a lot of people are and I think it's a great thing for them. So we can't take and throw stones at something that you personally don't like to do and you might like to do something else. You have to look at the whole picture. And the whole picture looks like to me, there's a lot of kids there, there's a lot of people going there. I think the Cultural Alliance is doing a good job, we just have to have a little bit more accountability.
Okay, Debbie Franklin, what's your position on the agency's contract with the Cultural Alliance?
Well, my position has been, and I continue to hold, that anytime we spend money with any organization, they have to be held accountable for how those dollars are spent. I have not found satisfaction in that Cultural Alliance has actually given sufficient information regarding how they've spent their money, so I have voted against that. I've also voted to support the grand jury's recommendation that the grant, the Cultural Alliance give money back because they did not fulfill their contracts. And even though they are a good thing, I don't believe that our city should be the one supporting it. I think they need to go out and get other funds because there are funds available for cultural activities. We need to spend our money on economic development for our city.
Okay, Victor Edinburgh, what is your position on the Redevelopment Agency's contract?
I don't really think we need the Redevelopment Agency at this point. We have a community development department within the city of Banning and the community development can use those particular expertise that they have in bringing art to the city. The Cultural Alliance has drained the city of funds. We don't need any more draining of funds. We need to work, as Debbie stated, on economic development. I, I think that it was a good thing at one time, but now it hasn't lived up to its billing because they haven't been accountable. If the grand jury says that it should be, the money should be given back to the city, there must have been a reason for that. I was on the grand jury for three years and I know that when they make a decision like that, that they make a recommendation, it should be listened to. I'm, I'm not for that, any more funds going to the Cultural Alliance. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, Bob Botts, what is your position on the alliance?
We contracted for some very, very specific things with the alliance to bring people downtown and as we've said many times, we're doing bricks and mortar with our facades and our buildings, but the city is not in the business of bringing people downtown. And so very specifically, we asked them to go into programs to bring people downtown and I think they've done that basically well. The, the many events that, in a number of you have, have probably been to. I would tell you that I was on the alliance years ago, I resigned when I became, came to the council and the plan then and was is that they need to be self-sufficient. And in fact, we reduced their budget or the number that we fund them this year very significantly. And if you've started redo our economic development plan, that, our five-year plan, in year two or three, there are zero dollars going to the alliance. But they have brought people, they have brought young people, schools closed down, art, and we've picked that up or they have picked that up. So I, I think that they have done a good job, but long-term, they need to be self-sufficient.
Okay, Edward Miller, what is your position on the contract with the Banning Cultural Alliance?
I think the Cultural Alliance is a fantastic organization that has brought many great cultural events to our city. The problem is that a city council has completely ignored the fact that the redevelopment agency's function is to redevelop and bring businesses in. And when it came to the contracts and money given to the Cultural Alliance, our city council absolutely did nothing to see whether or not what the Cultural Alliance was doing was helping bring business in. There was no question as to whether or not the various businesses downtown had increased expen, people come to them. There was no indication, no asking, were people from other cities coming to these events? There was no question at all by the city council as to what the result was of the money spent. And if I were on the city council, that's what I would do in every respect.
Okay. Lyndon, I'm sorry, we're, we're at time. Lyndon Taylor, what's your position on the contract with the alliance?
I, I would end it immediately in terms of the financial support. I believe in what the grand jury said, that the board should cease and desist all monetary relationships with the council. I would demand a return of the hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars plus interest for reasons of the lack of performance of the Cultural Alliance in that area. And I would encourage them to do as other art groups do, such as the Pass Artists Group in Beaumont, and become self-supporting.
Okay, next question, we're going to begin with Debbie Franklin. The city is developing a parks and recreation master plan. What does the city need in the way of parks and recreation?
Our city has a lot of needs for parks and recreation, specifically for activities for our young people, organized sports that we do not have now because of our facilities not being maintained as well as we would like to because of a lack of funding. So first we have to get money into the city, then have the facilities themselves actually maintained in a manner that kids will be able and willing to come out and play in our areas. We also need to make sure we have activities for our seniors to do because those are the two parts of our community that are most lacking in terms of activities for their extra time. Thank you.
Okay, Edward Miller, what does the city need in the way of parks and recreation?
We have just had a review of our parks department by a contractor, Urban Futures Company, and that company, I believe, was paid sixty thousand dollars for their review. No one needs a review of our parks, it's obvious what we need. We need places where our children can play basketball, where they can play baseball, that's obvious. I would like to emphasize that our city council just loves to have different companies come in to give their opinion, pay them, and then ignore what they say. They, they ask that we spend five million dollars on our parks. That was their conclusion after getting the money. Obviously, we don't have five million dollars right now to spend on the parks. So what our city has to do is recognize that we have to get more money, we have to get business in. That, once we get more business in, then we can improve our parks.
Okay, Lyndon Taylor, what does the city need in the way of parks and recreation?
I agree that it needs youth and adult sports activities. It needs areas for various other kinds of recreation. But as I sat in that meeting the other night and listened to that report on the parks, I was impressed by some of their projections, the, by the consultants on population. Councilman Machisik caught this as well. They're projecting forty thousand people in Banning in about four years. Now, I don't think that's realistic. So we've got to start with what is a realistic projection for our population and then deal with the issues of how do we have parks that support them.
Okay, Perry Bray, what does the city need in the way of parks and recreation?
Well, I think one, one thing we do need is we need to go out and we need to evaluate the parks that we have and then do some repairs on them. There's a lot of things that we need to be done to. I coach basketball for the community. I've done that for over fifteen years. I've enjoyed it, I will continue doing it. If I get elected to this board, I will continue to coach because I enjoy playing with the kids and going out there with them. When you get the kids involved and activities going on with, for them, they are good kids, they grow up and they listen to you. I have kids that are in high school now that I coached when they were in kindergarten and they call me Coach. Coach, are you going to coach basketball again this year? Can I help you? Now that, that just thrills me to know that kids want to do more things. What hurts me is when they come up to me and say, we have no place to do anything. Well, we do have a nice facility, those things have been taken care of. The community center has been remodeled. It needs to be a little bit bigger, but it's been done. There's some things that have been done. I think we need to work on our park, make the softball fields better. That way we can have more adult softball, more youth softball. We need to do a lot more things to get the kids to do more activities.
Okay, Bob Botts, what does the city need in the way of parks and recreation?
I, I think we need a master plan, whether we hire a consultant or not. You need to have a plan to move forward. We have quite a few parks, but we need better maintenance. I think we've already, several have already mentioned that. They need to be better prepared and, and our diamonds and, and fields need to be better prepared. We need to expand recreation programs, I think everyone agrees with that, youth and senior programs. The question will be finding the dollars to do that. We have a plan for Reppler Bowl, which is used a, a great deal of the time. But I would say probably the biggest thing we ought to be doing, and we're meeting with the school district next week in a joint meeting, is they are building new football fields, soccer fields, swimming pool, Olympic-sized pool. They own football fields right across from the city. We need to have much more joint use, joint use of those facilities. Taxpayers own them, they don't care whether it's the city or the school district. It's, they own them and we need to do a better job of working together with, with the school district.
Okay, Victor Edinburgh?
Yes, if, if I'm not mistaken, I, I think there's only one employee that works in the Park and Recreations Department and I think that there needs to be more employees working in there if the budget can stand it. There are going to have to be some, maybe some cuts in other places so that they can get the parks and recreations up to snuff. There needs to be more maintenance as there always is and there needs to be more people out there working on that particular type of thing. I think that we need to get the city involved with that, get the schools involved with parks and recreation and go with that. We have to get a collaborative effort between the city, the schools and the community. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to get through two more questions before we close. First, on this question will be Edward Miller. All right, we've mentioned, we've heard a lot about budget deficits and necessity of cuts. Where in the city budget would you first look for cuts and why?
I certainly would not look for cuts anywhere. Our budget has been cut to the bone. The only possible place where we can cut our budget is in the water improvements. There is a plan to build a reclamation plant that would bring water to Sun Lakes for its golf course. That plant will cost eleven million dollars to begin with and the water that it will produce will be more expensive than fresh water. Concepts like that cannot exist in this case of a drastic budget problem. The reason we have the drastic budget problem is that we do not have enough tax base. Our whole concentration has to be on getting new business into Banning. And as I said, we must lower our utility rates to do that, we must improve our connection with business to get that business in. Without new business, we will always be on the verge of bankruptcy.
Okay, if, Lyndon Taylor, if it's necessary to make cuts to balance the budget, where would you go for cuts?
Again, I, I would use a different approach as well. I would look toward the tax base and improving the amount of tax funds that we're bringing into our city. I would also look at the area of grants. I know that the city is doing a good job on that area, but I would like to see a grants coordinator at the city hall level that will act as kind of the ringleader for getting more grants into our city. I think that we've cut our budget about as far as we can and I certainly would not cut in the area of police protection. The police is all, the police department's already The police is all, the police department's already dropped from 41 officers down to 33. That's too much of a cut in our police force.
Perry Bray?
Well, without completely reading the budget and to see where everything's at, it'd be kind of hard, it's a very hard question. You've heard already where Bob Botts has said we've cut $5 million in the budget? That's a pretty drastic cut. Services have been cut, there's different things that, what's happened in the city of Banning. Is there more cuts that we made? I don't know. I think what you'd have to do is go to each one of your line items that you've got out there, find out exactly what you're spending, what money you're getting for your dollar. If we have outside resources that are coming in to do things for us, such as a master plan for our parks and recreation, if we're spending money on that, maybe we should pull back and see if we have somebody here in town that can do it. Outside contractors, if we have people coming from other towns that are working here in Banning, why can't we find somebody in our city to do that work? There's a lot of restrictions, a lot of different things you have to worry about when you're spending funds that are federal funds or government funds. They, they mandate a certain amount of money you have to pay out to people, and that makes it tough. It makes bidding very competitive to a high point instead of a low point.
Okay, Bob Botts, the cuts are necessary to balance the budget, where would you look?
After cutting $14 million citywide, I can't support any further cuts and laying off 32 people, which we did not want to lay off anyone. We need to do two things. One, time is going to help us, irrespective of my opponent. This recession has killed most cities. Property tax, tax increment, sales tax, across this state, across this country, are way down. Water revenue is down $1 million. We can't do anything about that, time is going to help us. On the other hand, the major issue I've talked about most of the day is economic development, similar to the Dodge property. That will bring us many, many thousands and thousands of sales tax dollars. I agree with most everybody, I think it said it, we can't cut anymore, we need to raise our income, we need to find ways to increase our revenue.
Okay, Victor Edinburgh, same question?
Well, the first thing I would do, I mentioned it before, is to have an audit. You have to be able to know where your discrepancies are, where you can save money, and where you can spend money. So there would have to be an audit, a very good fiscal audit, and there are firms that can do that. Also, I think in cutting, I think there, there are places that can be cut. One would be the Flume, where we're paying a million-two for that particular thing, and I don't know how that's going to work, but that's going to cost some money. It's going to cost money to maintain it, it's going to cost money to keep it up, and it's going to cost money to buy for medicine. Also, we shouldn't be spending money on a bond issue for the junior college. That's going to take other millions of dollars out of our coffers. So those are two things that I think could be looked at very closely. And I don't have all the details, because I don't have the budget, and I haven't studied it like these gentlemen here and this lady here. But I, I think that there's some things that could be cut that could happen, and those are two of the things that I think should be cut. The Flume and the community college bond.
Right, Debbie Franklin?
I think what we have to do first is have every department go through and on a regular basis, at least quarterly, make sure they are not spending any money that's not absolutely necessary. It's going to be very difficult to add any specific cuts to the budget, because we have cut pretty much to the bone. But I think it's already been mentioned that we have to focus on economic development, we really have to look at what capital improvements we have already scheduled, what kind of projections they have in terms of population, what the needs are, and make sure we only do those things that are absolutely necessary to bring resources to the city, increase our revenue, and actually just try to really survive until we get through this economic slump.
Okay, Lyndon Taylor will field this question first. This will be our final question before the closing statements. You mentioned the police department. Banning has its own professional police force. Other cities have contracted for police services with the county. How is, how is the city going to be able to maintain its own police department?
Well, we saw just recently, the police department received a $700,000 grant. I would also utilize redevelopment funds, which some cities use to support the police department. I would maintain and make every effort to grow our police department back to a reasonable level. I had an opportunity a few evenings ago to do a ride-along, and for Banning, the city of Banning, from the hours of 4:00 in the afternoon till 2:00 in the morning, they had four officers patrolling that entire city area, and that's far too little. Those fellows were running their heads off the whole time. I'm a strong supporter of law enforcement. I think we need to spend money in this area, even if it means cutting in other areas.
Okay, we're going to go right down the line, and then the closing statements will come back this way. Perry Bray, how does the city maintain its own police force in these tough economic times?
Well, first of all, I think we have a great police department. If you look at the report that just came out from the FBI, they were number three in the county. I mean, if you've taken eight jobs away and they still performed, outperformed, exceeded expectations, then I think you need to give our police department a hand, that they are taking these tough times and saying, "You know what? We're going to do our part, and we're going to make it work. We're going to make things happen. We know it's going to get better." And that's the positive attitude we've got to have. We've got to tighten up our belts, we've got to make things stronger, we've got to make things better, but we've got to all be willing to lift our own load and carry it. Quit pointing fingers, quit saying, "We lost this, we lost that." Look at the results. The police department has done it, I give them all the praise you can give them right now. Thank you.
Okay, Bob?
I think the answer is what we've talked about, is raising new revenue. 65% to 70% of all of our general fund budget goes for police and fire. It's a huge amount. None of us wanted to see PD reduced. However, we have a responsibility to our taxpayer to balance the budget, and so there had to be some reductions there. We've already, we're already using redevelopment dollars to help fund some of those programs, and we're going to have to look at that as we, we go forward. But simply surviving through the economy and the, and the recession, and then our economic development to begin to bring new sources of revenue is the way we'll fix the police department.
Okay, Victor?
Yes, I believe in maintaining the police department and also the fire departments. I don't think there should be any cuts in that particular area. They've dropped, like I, you've heard, from 41 to 35 officers. They're one of the best police departments that I've heard of. I've heard of them even before I came to Banning. One of my friends used to be the police chief here, Art Davis, many years ago. So I know that they, they do a fine job, and we would like to maintain that particular force, or even improve it. There are some things in terms of that building that could be maybe satisfied with a movement of that particular police force to maybe another building and use, use that other building, that particular building for the, the attorneys and other people that are coming here for the new court. So there's some changes that could be made that could save money. So I wouldn't downgrade the police department, but that we could do some other things that would put them in a place that would be equitable.
Okay, Debbie Franklin, how's the city go about maintaining the, its own police force?
First thing, I think we have to recognize them on a regular basis and let them know that we appreciate they're doing a good job. We need to focus on community policing, because the more we can get the community involved with making sure our own neighborhoods are safe, that makes it easier for the police to do. We need to look at public safety districts for our new development as it comes in, so that we're not putting a tax burden on those people who are already here, but we're having new people come in, paying their own way. And then lastly, we need to continue to have grants. There are a lot that come out on the federal and the state level, that we need to make sure our hand is out with full completed applications as soon as they come out, so that we have an opportunity to get dollars also.
Okay, thank you. Edward Miller, same question?
It's great to be last on this question, because everybody agrees we have a great police department, and no one is interested in cutting the police department whatsoever. We're going to get a new court system in, and obviously, the police department is appropriate for that. And it's part, part of the reason we're getting the new court system in is obviously our good police department and the fact that it is a city police department. To consider the fact that we might change it into a county one is not in anyone's interest, and no one here is interested in that. Again, when it comes to how do we support them, they really have to be the number-one priority of our city. The safety of everyone is obviously the number-one concern. And again, we must bring new business in, new tax base, in order to support them and all the other facilities.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your responses. Now, we're going to give each candidate one minute for a closing statement. As I said, we're going to start at the end and come this way. So Edward Miller, you have the floor for one minute.
I became interested in the local politics of Banning when the city council, with the two members who are currently running for reelection, voted to bring, to have a letter of intent bringing a polluting, sludge, sewage, burning plant in, which would take all the sewage from Southern California and burn it here. And to me, it's obvious that the first question that should have been asked is, "Why doesn't Orange County do it? Why bring it here?" So just common sense seems to be lacking in what the city council did there. And it seems to me that so much of what the city council is doing now is a lack of common sense. We cannot spend our redevelopment money on empty buildings. We have to spend that money in getting new business in, in getting developers, asking the developers, "What can we do to help you?", not the other way around, as the city council is doing.
Okay, Debbie Franklin, one minute.
Some things have been said today that I think are mistruths and half-truths, and it's hard to be able to really talk about those in the short amount of time that we have. I think that what we really need to focus on is policy governance. We need to be policy-driven, not issue-driven. We need to make sure we are accountable, and to be accountable, we have to hold staff accountable to make sure the policies are done the way that they've been set in place. We also need to make sure our city hall is customer-friendly to all people, residents and businesses coming in. We need citywide communications on a regular basis, and we all need to make sure that we are fully financially responsible for the direction our city is going in, not only what we need for now, but also what we need for the future.
Victor?
Closing statement. If elected, I will not do the things that follow. Favor special interest groups or individuals over the, whom are struggling, over those who are struggling to keep their businesses operating. I will not favor the well-off over the ones who don't have or are just struggling to survive. I will not take donations from those entities that do not have the entire community of Banning as their benefactors or better quality of life. On the other hand, here's what I will do. Provide an open door to listen to everyone who expresses their likes or dislikes, or any other, all issues that will affect the lives of the citizens of Banning. I will be fair-minded, just in all matters, not favoring anyone or any group over anyone or any special organization. I will ensure all monies spent in the city operations are accounted for on all occasions. I will keep in mind that all monies for the city functions are monies for the pockets of Banning citizens, not my own. Thank you.
Okay, Bob Botts?
I'll close with my agenda, which is no hidden agenda, simply to spend time making Banning a better place to live, work, and play. It's the only goal that I've had in the last four years, and that's what my goals will be for the future. I do need to clarify, I'm the only council member that voted against the water increase, so that we could get staff's attention. I did promote a plan, and I'm still proposing a plan that says we need to make sure that we don't default on water bonds. But the money that I'm proposing we use for some reserves is ratepayer money. You all paid that money in, into the reserves, and rather than a huge increase, I'm suggesting we use some of those reserves. And lastly, we saved the Engine Company 20 on the west side, and actually saved taxpayers a million dollars. Beaumont is now contributing $500,000, and the county is contributing $500,000 to Engine Company 20. So we have it for Beaumont and Banning and Cherry Valley and the Sun Lakes for quick response time, and we saved a million dollars.
Thank you. Perry Bray, you have one minute.
Well, my closing statement, I'd just like to say, I think there's a few things that we need to do in the city of Banning. One, get our businesses and our city working hand-in-hand. Two, have more activities for our youth and our seniors. Things that they can do together, things that they can do separately, but they can co-mingle and realize that, hey, we're all one community. And our third thing, we need to tap our resources. Our resources are people, our churches, and our businesses. If we can tap those things, get them to come out and help us out, and show them that we want to work with them, we can fix our parks, we can fix our roads, we can fix the dilapidated lots that have weeds, they'll go out there and do these things. You just have to ask them. I work with a church, our church goes out and does different things. You need some help? We're there to help, because we're part of this community. We're not somebody sitting on the side in a country club saying, "This is it for us." We're all part of this community, we all need to come out and do our best.
Okay, Lyndon Taylor?
This election is about economic development, but it's also about regaining the trust of the people, restoring the reputation of Banning, returning to a sound financial footing and a stronger tax base, solving that water crisis, stopping the waste of taxpayer money, becoming a business-friendly city, and bringing new employers and new jobs to Banning, restoring our police department's numbers. It's also about leadership, and it's also about planning. But most of all, it's about restoring common sense to city hall.
All right, thank you very much, and good luck to all of you. We'd like to thank everyone for coming here to the... We'd like to thank everyone who came out to the Noble Creek Community Center, and also everyone who joined us live on PE.com. Again, all of these forums will be available on-demand through video on the website. We'd like to thank our sponsors, The Press Enterprise, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation Park District, and Mount San Jacinto College. We'd also like to invite everybody to join us on PE.com on November 2nd for a live election show, and of course, we'll have more results as they come in late that night, and again on November 3rd. Today's webcast has been produced by Angel Ortiz and Dave Kaufman. Thanks again to Carol Park. And again, join us for election coverage here on PE.com. For The Press Enterprise, I'm Nels Jensen.